After the end, there we go. Yeah, turn it down. The first day after hurricane season, I can say the H word now. But how about the first day of not hurricane season and our third victory Monday in a row? Congratulations to all who celebrate. We're going to begin with our opening ceremonies and invocation followed by salute to the flag. Invitation delivered by Mr. Wagner, please rise.
We want to take time and express our gratitude and thankfulness for you and your guidance and your wisdom. As we are on the backside of this Thanksgiving season. We want to take time to express our thank, our thankfulness for all those that wake up every day with a servant's heart to take care of us. Whether that's our public safety, of military educators and clinicians and anyone who leads with a servant's heart. As we, as we approach out of the Thanksgiving holiday season, we are going to enter into the giving holiday season. And we just ask that you lay on each of our hearts as that, so that we may all stay super focused on celebrating the reason for this upcoming holiday, which is your son's birthday and the spirit of giving. And in your name we pray, amen.
I thank the religions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Golding.
Here.
Councilmember Horn.
Here.
Councilmember Jansen.
Here.
Councilmember Sutton.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Wouters.
Here.
Mayor Hoffman. Here, moving on to approval of minutes.
I move we approve the minutes from the council briefing held on November tenth, twenty twenty five.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries, item B.
I move we approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on November seventeenth, twenty twenty five.
Second, we have a motion and a second and discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Approval of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second, we have motion and a second and discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Announcements? Ms. Golding.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to mention, I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. And I had the opportunity to attend a Thanksgiving gratitude service last week at Palm's Presbyterian. It was hosted by One Jack's. And it was a wonderful service because there were faiths representative of all kinds. I mean, it was, it was really, really amazing to see all the people that were there. And they were there in unity and, and gratitude. So it was a really wonderful service. I think they do it every year, so I do plan to do it again next year. And if they have it again next year, I hope everyone has an opportunity to attend. This Wednesday, December third, at seven o'clock at the Beaches Branch Library, Beaches Watch will be awarding their gift back award to the nonprofit organization here tomorrow, which is here at the beaches. And it provides no cost, no wait, a year-long suicide prevention services, which is really a very important service for our community. So if it, this opportu, the meeting will be an opportunity for them to receive a donation to support the great work that they're doing, but they'll also be discussing the work that they're doing. So if you have the time, I would encourage you to attend that so that you can learn more about what this organization's doing in our community. Then on Friday, December fifth, at six P M., the Nutcracker Ballet is going to be at Deck the Chairs. I love ballet and I love the Nutcrackers, so that should be really, really good. And I hope everybody will plan to go out for that. And then on Saturday, December sixth, Deck the Chairs has a Christmas market for the first time this year. And there will be fifty-two vendors. So get your Christmas shopping started if you haven't already and support our small businesses that will be participating. And then my favorite part of Deck the Chairs, Saturday, December thirteenth, at one P M., will be Tuba Christmas. And if you have never been to Tuba Christmas, you have missed out and you, but you have an opportunity to go. And I mean, there has to be at least a hundred tubas that are on the stage of all sizes and playing Christmas songs. And you have never lived until you've heard Grandma Got Run Over by a Reindeer played by tubas. And then last but not least, I think the mayor mentioned this in the last meeting, but I think it's worth mentioning again. Our Citizens Police Academy, which our police department puts on twice a year, will be starting January eighth. And it's an amazing, once-a-week class that you can go to to learn about our police department, all the different departments, what they're doing and the issues that they deal with in our community. The application deadline is December nineteenth, so you've got time to, to sign up. They do limit the size of the class to twenty-eight people and it's only twenty-five dollars, but you get a shirt and you get to have a lot of great experiences. So highly recommend it. Encourage people to sign up.
Thank you, Ms. Golding. I believe it's over two hundred tubas and various tubo-like instruments. Yeah, it's pretty incredible. And they flow off the stage. There's some seated on the ground level. But I agree, one of my favorites. And if you are heading out to the Nutcracker, check the weather first because it's looking a little dicey this week. Mr. Wagner.
Yeah, just two or three more years, maybe I'll get that down. So wanted to share, in the spirit of gratitude, wanted to share some exciting news that I received yesterday. And I was asked to participate in the two thousand and six Regional Leadership Academy, which is a program from the Northeast Florida Regional Council dedicated to fostering regional collaboration and leadership across the Northeast Florida. So I was pretty excited about that to get to represent the city of Jackson Beach and this amazing group of folks up here. So quite an honor. And then secondly, my wife and I did go out to Deck the Chairs on Saturday, and I just want to throw in another word of encouragement. Council Golding did a great job, but it really was fabulous. I really think you guys need to go out and enjoy it if you have a chance.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Jansen.
Yes, a couple of things. One, later on this week, my colleagues and I will be attending the final policy committee week for bills that will be hitting the legislation this coming legislative season. So we will be busy at work later on this weekend, this week, and trying to solidify those that are most important for Jacksonville Beach. We'll be coming back with report and how that went probably in the next meeting. And then also right before Thanksgiving, I had the opportunity to represent Jacksonville Beach for Farm City Week. And I learned quite a bit during that, that engagement. Where Duval County accounts for eleven point one billion dollars' worth of agricultural annually. So between small farms and, and big farms and big institutions, that's a, that's a lot of farming that goes on. And I didn't also know that Florida is one, is the largest state for beef farming. Out of thought for sure, it would have been one of the western states, but Florida's the largest. So there was a lot to be learned there and it was, it was fantastic to represent our little beach and probably the little gardens that are, that float around our beach community. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jansen, Mr. Wouters.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Councilwoman Golding for her thoughtful comments and announcements. And here tomorrow is, is a great cause. And I look forward to the tubas. I did want to say, to congratulate our, some local businesses. And the first one that comes to mind is Coaches Christmas Trees. They've been in business seventy-two years and I've never had the pleasure of buying a tree there till the other day. And they have the best prices in selection in Jacksonville Beach, I guarantee it. So I would recommend if you haven't got your tree yet, check them out. It's for a good cause. All the profits go to Councilman Sutton's pockets. And then I'd like to congratulate D N L P, P, Subs on fifteen years of being in business. And Councilman Jansen, I, I, I'm sorry I won't be able to attend, but I know you all will do a great job. And in any way I can help, please let me know. Thank you.
And just to echo, I went out to Deck the Chairs on Wednesday, Thanksgiving Eve. It was beginning to feel not at all like Christmas. It was a really nice spring evening, but it was a great start, already really busy. And I think it's going to be the best year yet. I say that every year, but every year they managed to, to raise the bar and congratulations, Councilman Wagner. That's a great program. I think you're really going to enjoy it and you might see me on one of the panels, a little towards, towards the end. Okay, any other council announcements? Moving on to courtesy of the floor, I do not have any speaker cards, Madam Clerk. Did I miss any? Great. And next up, consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any post? Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have a slew of, it's kind of our time to make appointments to the board. We've gotten to all of our citizen boards, we've gotten in a really good rhythm of starting interviews in the fall so that we can come into December ready to make our appointments for any expired terms, any resignations, things like that. And start off January with everybody kind of installed and ready to go. Madam Clerk, did you have anything to add at this point before we get started? Okay, just wish us luck. Okay, so the first item is, one of our appointments is a fifth member to the General Employees Pension Board. We have Mr. Maresma, who's served for quite some time on that board and has done a really great job for us. Is rolling off. And so we're, the General Employees Board did vote to appoint Greg Clefner. So we just need to kind of ratify that with a motion. And Dan Jansen and I both sit on that board and I think we're excited to bring in a new, a new person to hopefully serve for another good length of time like Mr. Maresma did. Can I have a motion?
You can. I move to appoint Greg Kefler, Kef, Clefner to cert, to serve on the Board of Trustees as the fifth member of the General Employees Pension Board beginning January first, twenty twenty-six and expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Golding.
Yes.
Councilmember Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman. Yes, motion carries. The next item is to appoint, the next two items are to appoint a chair and a co-chair for the Community Redevelopment Agency. This is the only of the citizen boards where we are responsible for appointing the chair and co-chair. And we did not realize that we needed to do that every single year until recently. So we're going to go ahead and add that into our healthy habits of board management. We received a memo with the information and indication that all of the current members of the Community Redevelopment Agency are interested in potential appointment. We also received an attendance chart, which was very nice. I did want to note, just, and don't take this as a, any, any sort of advocacy one way or the other, but Ron Whittington did have three absences in a row. He was on an anniversary cruise to Australia and New Zealand. So that, I think that was planned long before he ever even applied for the board. So just wanted to make a note of that since that's going to probably stand out to you. So I think what we'll do is open the floor for nominations for the chair. And then if we have more than one nomination, we'll go ahead and accept all of those and then we'll have a vote. Kind of a roll call vote where we can say who we prefer for that seat. Ms. Golding.
I'd like to nominate Gary Paytow to serve as the chair again.
A second.
There, we don't need a second, we're just taking nominations, yep. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Jansen.
I was going to nominate Ron Whittington to move to chair.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, so we'll go down the roll call and if, when your name is called, if you can indicate Paytow or Whittington. Madam Clerk? Councilmember Horn.
Paytow.
Councilmember Jansen.
Whittington.
Councilmember Sutton.
Paytow.
Councilmember Wagner.
Paytow.
Councilmember Wouters.
Paytow.
Councilmember Golding.
Paytow.
Mayor Hoffman. Whittington. Congratulations, Mr. Paytow. Well, he was here, there he is. Thank you for your continued service, yep. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Now, I've been advised by the city attorney that we need a motion to ratify that.
I move we appoint Gary Pa, Paytow as the chair for the Community Redevelopment Agency for a term beginning on January first, twenty twenty-six.
Second, we have motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters.
Yes.
Councilmember Golding.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman. Yes, and moving on to vice chair, I'll open the floor for nominations. Ms. Golding.
I'd like to nominate that Mosley for the vice chair.
Mr. Sutton.
I'll nominate Kevin Myers.
Any other nominations? We have Thad Mosley and Kevin Myers. Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Jansen.
Myers.
Councilmember Sutton.
Myers.
Councilmember Wagner.
Myers.
Councilmember Wouters.
Myers.
Councilmember Golding.
Mosley.
Councilmember Horn.
Myers.
Mayor Hoffman. Myers. And a motion?
I move we appoint Kevin Myers as the chair, as the vice chair for the Community Redevelopment Agency for a one-year term beginning on January first, twenty twenty-six.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Sutton.
Sorry.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Jansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters.
Yes.
Councilmember Golding.
Yes.
Councilmember Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman. Yes, motion carries. Okay, moving on to the Planning Commission. We have two members rolling off. So we are, we have traditionally moved up the alternates into the regular seats. I'm going to assume that that is what we're going to do in this case. So I would suggest that we start with the appointment of Dean Haddock to fill the remainder of Debbie Cole's uninspired, unen, uninspired. I feel like it's probably slightly inspired. Because that's just a, that's a slightly shorter time, but let's, we'll, we'll go to discussion. Can we go ahead and get a motion on that?
Give me the name again, Dean.
Dean Haddock.
Haddock. I move we approve the appointment Dean Haddock to fill the remainder of Debbie Cole's unexpired term on the Planning Commission with a term beginning on January first, twenty twenty-six and ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Oops. Councilmember Sutton.
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters.
Yes.
Councilmember Golding.
Yes.
Councilmember Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman. Yes, motion carries. And then the next one would be Matthew Filer. And, and the reason I hesitated before was just they had different expiration dates, but it's because they're filling unexpired terms.
One more time, Matthews.
Filer.
I move we approve the appointment of Matthew Filer to a new, a new four-year regular member term on the Planning Commission beginning January first, twenty twenty-six and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters.
Yes.
Councilmember Golding.
Yes.
Councilmember Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman. Yes, motion carries. Okay, now that we have moved Mr. Haddock and Mr. Filer up into regular seats, we need to install a first alternate and then a second alternate. So I'll open the floor for nominations for first alternate. Ms. Golding.
I'd like to nominate Lindsay Haga.
Any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wouters?
Yes, I would like to nominate John Lyons.
Mr. Sutton.
Greg Clefner. Oh, he's already been appointed, sorry.
Yep, we just appointed him to pension. So we have Ms. Haga and Mr. Linus are our two nominees. Let's go down the roll call, same as before. Councilmember Wouters.
Lyons.
Councilmember Golding.
Haga.
Councilmember Horn.
Lime.
Councilmember Jansen.
Haga.
Councilmember Sutton.
Lyons.
Councilmember Wagner.
Lyons.
Mayor Hoffman.
Haga.
Mr. Linus has the nomination. Let's have a motion for first alternate.
I move we appoint Mr. Linus as the new first alternate to the Planning Commission to fill the remaining of the first alternate term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Sutton? Gotta watch our lights around here, guys.
A little tired.
Getting festive on this day, yes. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Wouters.
Yes.
Councilmember Golding.
Yes.
Councilmember Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman. Yes, and the last item on the Planning Commission is a second alternate. Ms. Golding.
I'd like to nominate Lindsay Haga.
We have a nomination for Lindsay Haga. Any other nominations? Let's go ahead and get a motion.
Yes, I would like to make a nomination, I'm sorry.
Okay, we got people on their lights, off their lights. Mr. Wouters, who's your nomination?
Pardon me, Mayor, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Deborah Klein.
Klein? Okay, we have a nomination for Lindsay Haga and for Deborah Klein. Any others? Madam Clerk, roll call for our, each of our selections. Councilmember Golding.
Haga.
Councilmember Horn.
Haga.
Councilmember Jansen.
Haga.
Councilmember Sutton.
Haga.
Councilmember Wagner.
Debbie Klein.
Councilmember Wouters.
Klein.
Mayor Hoffman. Haga. Okay, so we will have John Linus as first alternate and Lindsay Haga as second alternate for the Planning Commission. I'm sorry, motion?
I move we appoint Lindsay Haga as the new second alternate to the Planning Commission to fill the remaining, the remainder of the second alternate term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Golding.
Yes.
Councilmember Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman. Yes, okay, motion carries. Moving on, the last board is the Board of Adjustment. We have quite a few vacancies on this. Thankfully have two members that are interested in reappointment. So let's start with Matt Metz and then Douglas Dell. And then we'll go through the new member nominations. Go ahead with the motion.
I move that we approve the appointment of Matt Metz to a new four-year regular member term on the Board of Adjustments expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Horn. Councilmember Jansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters.
Yes.
Councilmember Golding.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman. Yes, and then the next one is Douglas Dell.
I move we approve the appointment of Douglas Dell to a new four-year regular member term on the Board of Adjustments expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Jansen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton.
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner.
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters.
Yes.
Councilmember Golding.
Yes.
Councilmember Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman. Yes, and just in case anyone's wondering if it seems like we're moving through this quickly, we did have a briefing a couple of weeks ago where we went through all of this to kind of put a, a little bit of a game plan together. We didn't have a great game plan on the next three items, so we're going to see how this goes. So we have a regular seat that is open and then two alternate seats. So I'm going to open the floor for nominations for the regular seat. And I'm sorry, didn't see who got there first, Mr. Jansen.
I think it was Ms. Golding.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Golding then, thank you.
I nominate Alex Erdel.
We have a nomination for Alex Erdel. Mr. Jansen.
I nominate Karen Doherty.
Karen Doherty. Any other, Mr. Sutton?
I nominate Gary Hockett. And just as a matter of order, I believe Mr. Erdel was desiring to withdraw his application.
Did we, did that information come to the clerk's office at all?
It may not have, yeah.
So I'm not really sure how to handle that. Because if he doesn't want it, then we have to go back and do this all over again. Unless we want to put him on second alternate instead. Just a thought, we can always do that and I think that would be easier to replace versus having to move everybody up.
My only thought was that in the interviews, he was a really strong candidate for the Board of Adjustment, which is why I thought since we need to put somebody in as a regular member as opposed to an alternate, I figured he would be good in that regular member seat. So that's why I nominated him.
Okay, Mr. Wouters?
Please forgive me, can, who were the nominations on the table?
Right now, we have Alex Erdel, Karen Doherty and Gary Hockett.
Boy, that's a lot. I'd like to nominate Deborah Klein. Oh, I'm sorry. Bobby Knudsen.
Bobby Knudsen? Yep. Mr. Sutton?
I was just going to add that I did have a discussion with Mr. Erdel to ensure that he was still interested. And it was, I think he has a scheduling conflict and he'd like to remain option, but not at this time in the future. So I don't know, again, I don't know how we handle that. He, I think he's probably the strongest candidate, quite honestly. So I was pretty disappointed that he had, that he had decided to do that, so. But I agree with Ms. Golding.
Okay, so we have, Ms. Golding?
I mean, I'll take your word for it, Mr. Sutton, and I'll withdraw my nomination.
Mr. Horn?
Had a commentary related to that, but move now.
Okay. Okay, so the remaining nominees for the regular seat on the Board of Adjustment are Karen Doherty, Gary Hackett and Bobby Knutz, Knudsen possibly? So we'll go, roll call and state the name of your candidate as your name is called. Councilmember Sutton.
Hockett.
Councilmember Wagner.
Doherty.
Councilmember Wouters.
Knudsen.
Councilmember Golding.
Doherty.
Councilmember Horn.
Hockett.
Councilmember Jansen.
Doherty.
Mayor Hoffman. Doherty. Doherty. And a motion, please?
I move we approve the appointment of Karen Doherty to fill the remainder of the unexpired regular member seat on the Board of Adjustments with a term expiration of December thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries. Phew, okay, now we move to, well, I'm not gonna jinx it yet, we still have two more. First alternate expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty nine, so this is um the nice place to put our newer members, which we've had, as you know, a tradition of doing. To have a little bit of a training ground and to participate and, and vote on any items uh should they need to. Ms. Golding?
I'd like to nominate Gary Hockett.
We have a nomination for Gary Hockett. Any other nominations? And we will go straight to a motion.
I move we nominate and appoint Gary, appoint Gary Hockett as the new first alternate with a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty nine.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries. Okay, last one, I since we aren't completely a hundred percent confirmed with Alex Erdel, if we did want to appoint him to something, this would be potentially and if he's an alternate, he may not feel quite as much pressure, but it's also easier to replace the second alternate than somebody above it, then we have to shuffle the deck. So, just throwing that out there, but I will go ahead and open the floor for nominations. Ms. Golding?
I'd like to nominate Alex Erdel.
Any other nominations? Mr. Wouters?
I'd like to nominate John Lyons.
I'm not sure if he'd wanna serve on two boards.
Sorry.
Okay, any other nominations? Mr. Horn?
Nomination with a comment?
Can you, on Mr. Erdel?
Under process.
Okay.
Um, and this may be a, a question for Mr. Miggit. If there's a question here, I mean, this is two thousand and twenty five, can we take like a ninety-second recess and somebody try and get him on the phone and ask him if, if he would pre- prefer us to do this as opposed to us, like we mentioned, you know, it is an easier spot to fill, and this is what I was gonna mention previously, is if we get to the point where we're gonna do X motion, I, I just don't know the procedural aspects of this, whether it's appropriate to take a three-minute break? See if we can grab him on the phone real quick and be like, hey, look, X, Y, and Z is occurring, is, you know, we were told you might not want to be as involved. Um, again, just a, just, uh, uh, I guess I, I don't know the procedural aspects of this, just my thoughts.
Mr. Wouters?
Or perhaps we could postpone it till a later date, till we could talk to him.
Ms. Golding?
Uh, the only comment I was gonna make is that um we have seen our Board of Adjustment meetings being canceled, so you know, I don't know if, if we are having fewer, if that would make it more easy, or make it easier for Mr. Erdel to attend, so maybe that's something that might make it possible. So, I mean, I would still support putting him, i- if, if everyone uh supports it in second alternate in that, unless we call him to confirm.
I, I think getting someone on the phone at six thirty in the midst of a vote is probably not, not the best way to handle it, but Mr. Horn?
And that's fair, I guess, that, I mean, as, as a, as a second alternate, it's not as, you know, one of these uh critical positions, and they're all critical, but you know, as, be, as difficult to fill down the road, so that's okay. I'm just, like I said, I was asking the question.
Yep, good question. Any other comments? Did we already do a motion? We haven't done a motion on this one. Mr. Jansen, the motion, please, uh, for Alex Erdel?
I move to nominate and appoint Alex Erdel as the new, new second alternate with a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty nine.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Wouters?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries. I just wanna thank um everyone, all of the citizens, not only who are already serving on our boards, but who applied with their willingness to serve, um, as well as our council members who put a lot of time into this process. I think it was a record, record number of interviews. We have a long list of eligible candidates, as you heard, for all of our boards, which um just really speaks so much to um people's interest in being involved in the city. We see a lot of them. I love the um asterisks among the ones who have attended the Citizen Information Academy, so our plan is working. Um, and a big thanks to the City Clerk's Office for keeping it all straight and organized for us, cause that's a a lion's share of being able to get us to this point and for that part of the meeting to run so smoothly. So, thank everyone uh involved. We will move on to our final item. Uh, we have an ordinance. Do we have a presentation from staff? Ms. Gossett?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Ashley Gossett, CFO. The city's purchasing policy manual was last updated in two thousand and eight, so we've been working on a strategic plan project to conduct a comprehensive review. So, city council and staff discussed the proposed policy changes in briefings held on September eighth and November tenth. So, tonight, I'm very excited that this is the first step in formalizing the proposed changes. The ordinance before you will increase the city's bid threshold from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand and rename the purchasing manual to the procurement manual to reflect the broader scope of sourcing goods and services. The ordinance also repeals section two dash one, which is definitions, because we're adding that to the manual. Um, and it repeals section two dash two, the Uniform Accounting System, because it's no longer relevant. The state statutes mandate all local governments to um use their prescribed uh uniform chart of accounts. So, we're just doing some tidy work in the code. So, if approved tonight, the next steps will be to bring the ordinance back on December fifteenth for its second reading and also to adopt the resolution for the new procurement manual. Um, and as always, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Gossett. Madam Clerk, will you read the ordinance by title, please?
An ordinance of the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, amending chapter two, administration of the city of Jacksonville Beach, Florida Code of Ordinances by repealing chapter two, administration, article one, in general, section two dash one, purchase of materials, et cetera, in excess of specified amount. Publication of notice for bids, definitions, amending and renumbering section two dash one dot one, purchase procedures, contracts, et cetera, and repealing section two dash two, adoption of uniform accounting system, providing for legislative findings, repeal of conflicting ordinances, separability, scrivener's errors, codification, and an effective date.
This ordinance is before the council for a public hearing and consideration on its first reading. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number twenty twenty five dash eighty-two thirty. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Would anyone from the public wish to speak in favor or against this ordinance? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move we approve ordinance number twenty twenty five dash eighty-two thirty on the first reading, amending the bid threshold in the city code ordinances, chapter two, administration, article one, in general, and schedule a second reading for December fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Wouters?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Ms. Gossett, I was just curious in reading your memo that uh you note that uh the state of Florida increased our threshold from twenty-five grand to thirty-five grand. What was the reason for the city of Jacksonville Beach going all the way to fifty grand?
So, we looked at kind of the um ease of procurement. We looked at what our neighbors were doing. We looked at other FMPA or electric providers, where their thresholds were. And we felt with inflations from two thousand and eight to twenty twenty five, that was kind of the appropriate level to kind of right-size um our need for competitive bidding.
Thank you for your answer, and I'm not sure if this would be a better question for Deputy Nelson or City Manager Nelson or yourself, but under the current ordinances, how much, if any, property has our city manager sold?
So, that section was added around about twenty twenty. There was a little sliver of parcel land and we didn't have any formal process for it. Um, so, a previous city attorney had drafted that legislation, which was added to our code ordinances. And since that time, we have not sold, or I'm sorry, I take that back. Since that time, we have sold the parcels in South Beach um Park that the city had been holding for a long period of time. Um, but that was at the direction of both council and the CRA.
Do you happen to recall who it was sold to?
Um, I do not, and I think we had six parcels in total and they went to three or four different bidders.
Thank you.
Any other question, questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Horn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wouters?